Meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. The Board of Education is meeting electronically due to the gathering size restrictions as delineated in MCL 333.2253. The public may participate in the meeting by joining the Zoom link listed above. Board members may be contacted through the emails listed below. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Upon prior request to the superintendent, the district shall make reasonable accommodation for a person with disabilities to be able to participate in the meeting. Requests for special assistance may be sent to Liz.Goodwin@BentonHarborAreaSchools.org. I call this meeting to order officially at 5:31 PM. We will begin by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll ask that everyone unmute and say it with me. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic, for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Secretary Triplet, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Liz, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
You have the roll call sheet in view only, so I can't operate, I can't work on it.
Okay, just call the names and I'll, I'll take care of it.
Okay, then can you make the necessary adjustments, please?
I will, thank you.
Okay. Okay, here we go. President Robinson. President Rob- Vice President Bradley.
Present.
Secretary Triplet, present. Treasurer Creighton.
Present.
Trustee Bowen.
Present.
Trustee Lou Buchanan.
Ms. Buchanan, can we have you unmute so that we can take your attendance?
Trustee Stephanie Rocket Martin.
Present.
A quorum is established.
Awesome. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Secretary Triplet, can you please call the roll for approval of the agenda? Or are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the agenda?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed that the committee reports were not on the agenda. Are we waiting till next week?
Yes, ma'am. That was, the plan was to give the committee, the committee update on the actual board meeting on 3/9, so that we're not duplicating both of the reports of that meeting, but I'm open to us having a discussion about that.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I just, I thought that you said the other way around, so my apologies.
No, it's okay. And Secretary Triplet actually had a question about that as well, so I was planning, planning to bring that up under new business so that we can discuss if we want to change how we're doing it, or if we want to do it both times. So you're perfectly fine. Any other questions, comments, or concerns regarding the agenda? Okay, hearing none, can I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the agenda be-
Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you. So the motion has been moved and seconded. Moved by trustee Rocket Martin and supported by Vice President Bradley that we approve the agenda. Secretary Triplet, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Stephanie Rocket Martin.
Yes.
Trustee Lou Buchanan. Trustee Trenton Bond.
Yes.
Treasurer Creighton.
Yeah.
Secretary Triplet, yes. Vice President Bradley.
Yes.
President Robinson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Awesome. Next, we have public comment. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment or educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Today, there are two areas for comment on the agenda of which you may decide when to speak. Public comment on agenda items only and open public comment. Per policy 0167.3, which governs board participation at board meetings, we request that you preface your comments by an announcement of your name, address, and group affiliation when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to a three-minute duration, and per our bylaws, no participant may speak more than once during this meeting. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. The board will listen, take comments, and questions under advisement, and not respond at this time. I, as president, will refer questions to the superintendent for research and response. If you have specific questions for the board or executive team that require follow-up, please email those directly to Liz.Goodwin@BentonHarborAreaSchools.org. Is there anyone currently on the line that would like to make a public comment on agenda items only? Again, I'll take a call for public comment on agenda items only. Okay, hearing none, we will proceed with the agenda. Today, we actually don't have anything under board business, so I will pass it on to Dr. Townsend for his information that he's going to provide to us today.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everyone's having a great week so far. I'm gonna jump right into it. First thing I'm going to is the response to public comment protocol. I know at our previous board meeting, there were questions raised about public comment. I want to be clear what the expectation is because our number one goal is to communicate efficiently and effectively. So I will read the response to public comment question protocol. This protocol has been established to provide prompt and thorough responses to all public comment questions posed during the public comment section of the Board of Education public meeting. Additionally, this protocol will be used for all meetings that are conducted in a virtual setting. A revised protocol will be developed once board meetings return to an in-person setting. Step one, the district-designated secretary to Board of Education meetings will collect all information regarding the participant and comments. The full name, address, phone number, and email, if available, should be collected. The comments and questions should be scripted from taped Board of Education meetings to ensure accuracy. Step two, the secretary will share all comments and questions with the superintendent and forward each comment or question to the appropriate department head for response. Step three, the department head will be responsible for providing necessary responses. And those responses should be formatted listed below using a departmental letterhead. Begin the document with RE for response or reply with the individual's name. To begin each response by stating the question in bold and respond to each question by stating the response under response colon. Once complete, the response should be returned to the secretary. Step four, the question or responses will be mailed to the individual and also emailed, if available, to the individual who submitted the question. Step five, copies of the written response will be forwarded to our Office of Information Service to post on the website. And our website currently has been updated to include a dropdown called Public Comment Responses. You go to www.bhs.org, click on School Board, and click under Public Comment Responses. And as we move forward, you'll see all the responses to any public comment that was raised. Step six, the superintendent will receive a copy of the written responses and share the responses at the following regular Board of Education meeting under Superintendent Three. Now, we will, we are changing that at our most recent board retreat. I will not read the public comment because we have it posted on our website. However, I may reread this protocol to just ensure that everyone's clear with how we respond to questions for public comment. Thank you.
Okay, and Dr. Townsend, I'm gonna pause you for a second because I just realized that I did not do the approval of minutes.
Okay, no problem.
We're so ready to jump into business that I did not notate that portion on the agenda and no one else noticed, so I just want to back up a little bit. So we actually have to approve the minutes for our 2221 work session board meeting, our 2921 regular work session board meeting, our 2921 closed session board meeting, and the 22721 special session board retreat meeting. We do have 227 closed session meetings that still have adjustments that need to be made. So currently, we're gonna take a vote for 2221, 2921, both regular and closed session, and 22721 special session board retreat meeting. So can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion to approve the following minutes.
Thank you, Vice President Bradley. Do we have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, so the motion has been moved by Vice President Bradley and supported by trustee Rocket Martin for approval of the minutes for 2221, 2921, both regular session and closed session, and 22721 special session board retreat meeting. Secretary Triplet, can you please call the roll?
President Robinson.
Yes.
Vice President Bradley.
Yes.
Secretary Triplet, yes. Treasurer Creighton.
Yeah.
Trustee Bond.
And I just want to confirm, this is not including the special minutes, correct?
Correct. It's not including the closed session minutes, correct?
Okay, I can support that, yes.
Trustee Buchanan. Trustee Buchanan.
She is there.
And trustee Martin Rocket.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding Dr. Townsend's response to the public comments? Board members have any input? I know we discussed it in our board retreat, but any additional comments currently on that information?
I have one small question. So on that protocol, would the board also receive the response?
Dr. Townsend, she has, that question was for you.
Sure. More than happy to send. I know last week I sent it in an email to all board members along with the protocol. If that's the practice that you'd like me to continue with, I can. But otherwise, it is posted off for our whole community to see on our webpage.
Okay, and we have a line that's ending in 871. Can we, can we have that line muted? Is that trustee Buchanan?
Yeah, my computer is not working, so I had to get on my phone.
Okay, do you have the capacity to mute yourself in between when you're, you're not speaking? Thank you very much. Okay, are there any other questions for Dr. Townsend regarding the response to public comments? Okay, you can proceed, Dr. Townsend, with your update on high school return to face-to-face?
Okay, I was talking and I was muted. As you know, on March 22nd, we expect to have our high school students back into the building. We did hear the community loud and clear in the past saying that they wanted our kids back in school. And we messaged this also in December as a district that we want to explore opportunities for our high school students to come back. And we did exactly that, so I'll share with you an update on where we are with that, okay? I have it here, so I'll just say next slide, whoever's clicking it, because I do have it in front of me as well. So we took four considerations into place. We took all stakeholder opinion from students, staff, and parents. We looked at all of the executive orders that have been rolled out by our governor, as well as health professionals' recommendations, such as Marion County Health Department. And last, the Benton Harbor context, listening to our greater community, listening to what people are saying, you know, on the ground and in the grassroots about coming back to school in Benton Harbor. I'm going to share our stakeholder opinion with you. I'll walk through this, but I do want to be succinct with it. So all of the teachers in the high school, we put a survey out and encouraged them to reply. We received 24 responses from teachers. Generally, about 38% of the teachers ranged from being neutral to saying yes, that they do support bringing our young people back, with about 60% saying they're undecided, strongly disagree, or they disagree. Looking at our students and parents, who made up over 240 responses, specifically from our students, roughly 80% of our students want some type of in-person learning or all-in-person learning. And 10% of those young people are unsure at this time, but overwhelmingly, about 80% of our students are looking for some type of in-person learning. When you look at what our parents are saying, our parents generally, about 37, 40%, want some in-person learning or unsure at the time, with about 60% of our families or our parents saying that they want to continue all online or all remote learning or all, or just being unsure. Now, I do want to be clear, that's only 35 parents that responded to that survey. We do take student voice extremely serious, so our goal is to meet everybody where we can. So looking at the next slide, the executive orders currently say as phase four of the roadmap, that currently our district is following phase four of the roadmap. This allows for in-person instruction with requirements and strong recommendations. Benton Harbor Area School continue to work within the perimeters of both plans that were written, submitted, and approved by the state. Specifically, we're talking about our Benton Harbor Area School return-to-school roadmap that we submitted June of 2020, and our extended COVID-19 learning plan that we had to have submitted by October 1st of 2020 as well. Next slide. The recommendations from our health professionals. What the research says is that we must reduce the risk of infection by social distancing being observed. Face masks must be worn properly and frequent hand washing occurring. Also, one thing that we do have in our high school, we do have a Clorox blast gun that we also are using and trying out at our basketball games that instantly sanitizes within 10 seconds. It kills the germs right then and there, so we take that extremely serious. The context in Benton Harbor, we made decisions, or we make decisions based on our community's dynamics, our parents' needs, our students' needs, and the whole staff meeting or staff input. So putting all of that data together, we were able to come up with a recommendation for returning back to learn. So here is the high school plan so far. So the development of this plan, right now, what's continuously happening, we have weekly team meetings, we have staff surveys, parent and student surveys, and whole staff meetings providing input. And in addition to that, we're thinking about maybe doing another test run with surveys just to get a little more respondents to ensure that we're meeting the need of the community. The selected model based on the surveys is that right now, we're going to have AM face-to-face block schedule. What that looks like is that periods one and two will be on Monday and Wednesday, and periods three and four will be on Tuesday and Thursday from 7:15 to 9:20, period one, 9:25 to 10:50 for period two. The PM virtual block will look like a seminar, periods one and two, and seminar periods three and four. So for the afternoon schedule, young people will be in seminar from 12 to 12:35, taking their first period from 12:40 to 1:45, and their second period from 1:50 to 2:55, and that's also gonna flop on the next day with our young people getting all of those hours in in the AM and PM schedules. So AM, our young people will be face-to-face, and the rest of their day will be completed virtual on the PM schedule. All of our students will have a blended face-to-face and virtual schedule. Remember, all those young people who did not opt to come in person will automatically have a completely virtual schedule, but the young people that's opted for in-person have the AM face-to-face with a block schedule. Fridays will continue to be virtual for all of our students and staff. So what that means, there are virtual office hours, professional development that's ongoing, and staff meetings for our principals as we navigate through this pandemic. Please note that students continue to have a choice of being 100% virtual. At any time, our young people can opt back into the 100% virtual setting so they can maintain that safety and security and be as safe as they possibly can. The rationale for this model is to honor all of our stakeholders' concerns. As you recall, we had roughly 60% of our staff saying no in-person, or about a good 60% of our parents saying no in-person, so we had to offer some options. The goal is to reengage our students. If you look at the promotional video that we put on our social media network, I think it's now garnered over 3,000 views of young people interested in coming back to school. And we want to really celebrate our class of 2021. It's been almost a full year since our juniors, now seniors, have been out of the high school. And we understand what tradition and tiger pride means to our alumni base, and we want to ensure that we can celebrate them. We want to allow for all student learning styles. I had an opportunity as superintendent to visit neighboring districts right here in Marion County, and in-person learning is occurring, so I had a chance to kind of scout and see what, for example, Brandywine, not Brandywine, but Marion Springs is doing, had an opportunity to see what Lakeshore is doing, and it gives me an idea of what it's going to look like for us. And I do feel confident that our team could execute and give our young people the best education possible during this pandemic. Reduce class sizes. There's very small class sizes, I think, out of over 550 students that are enrolled at the high school. Currently, to date, we have over 170 students looking to come in person, so that gives us plenty of space to work and be as safe as we possibly can. Much fewer transitions. If you look at that 1, 2, 3, 4 period, those are like block schedules. So our young people have an opportunity to learn as much as they can with very minimal hallway transitions. And there's ample time for sanitation between the classrooms. A major shout-out to our facilities department for securing the high-quality sanitizing equipment so we can expeditiously use those materials or machines to clean the classrooms swiftly. That concludes the rationale for the update of the high school returning face-to-face. Our team, principals, and educators put a lot of work into this, and as a superintendent, I do believe it'd be a great plan that we can execute and get our young people in person for this last quarter, while we also think of how we can celebrate them with a possible prom and a full-fledged graduation, taking advantage of the new executive orders and really maximizing our facilities and celebrating our kids. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns from the board for Dr. Townsend regarding the high school return to face-to-face?
President Robinson, I do have a question.
Okay, you have the floor, trustee Bond.
This is perfect. It kind of reminds me of the CAA or CAC, whatever they call it. Now, the name's changed so much, the model. But what I'm more concerned about is do we have a plan in place for the learning gap?
To address the learning gap, that's our goal. So one thing about this academic year, we know that there's gonna be a COVID-19 slide. The goal is, right now, we're still in the case study, so it's really hard to determine how much of a gap there will be compared to the past years because we did receive a waiver, the state has put in for a waiver for our standardized assessments. That's why we heavily use NWEA to see where we are and could address where our achievement levels are. But we do anticipate that there will be a dip in academic achievement, but it will be our goal to ensure that we make up those gaps.
And will regular support staff, like security guards and those be back at the high school? Because I understand that's been a concern.
Absolutely. We have those individuals in the building now as we speak, our student advocates, our extra counselors and security guards, or individuals that. So we want to get away from different titles in the past. So for example, at one of our elementary schools in the past, had six security guards compared to five security guards at the high school. And we have to really allocate those resources differently and teach, and call those youth advocate or advocate coaches or climate and culture coaches. So we do have that, those support staff members in the building right now, kind of getting used to what the operations are gonna be in the high school.
And this is my last question, I'm sorry, I'm hogging too much time. But at any point, is any teacher, I mean student, say they're virtual, but they want to go back in a week or two to in-person learning, are they able to do that?
You know what, trustee Bond, I think everything's a case, case by case. We're gonna give our every, our young people every opportunity to be in the best environment for them. So for example, if young people are in-person, say, you know what, this is not really for me, I want to go back to virtual, yes. Young people that are virtual, like, you know what, let me try this in-person. I do believe we will entertain that on a case-by-case basis. The importance of us getting that data initially upfront was so we can schedule. Scheduling is one of the hardest things to do. So based on how our scheduling goes and the master scheduling, I think we'll be able to entertain some case-by-case basis of in-person learning.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your questions, trustee Bond. Do we have any other members of the board that have any questions or comments regarding the high school return to face-to-face?
Yes, President Robinson, this is Secretary Triplet.
Okay.
We have 1,600 students. And I wonder if anybody have any of the, any data on exactly how many parents do we actually have in our district? Because, you know, some parents may have three or four kids. Do I have anybody narrowed it down to say that of the 1,600 students, there are 500 parents? So to get that number of how many parents we have. Because I'm kind of concerned about only 35 parents being who participated in the survey. And I was wondering, would you all continue to reach out? I know the students may want to come back to school. However, the parents need to be a part of this, and so with only 35 parents responding, I'm a little bit concerned about it. So that we can make sure that when we're making the decision, that all stakeholders are in, included in the process, and we'll be able to make some informed decisions. I was trying to get to the update on the high school return to face-to-face, but I had to request for permission to see it. So if that permission can be, if we can get access to be able to look at the plan ourselves, because I need some more time to to basically look over it and be able to ask my questions. But I'm glad to see that we do have a plan in place and that we're working in that direction. Also, as Mr. Bond said, at the high school, there was a security staff. Would those security members be called back to work at the-
It just depends. We do have some security on staff right now. We don't need the same amount because right now it's looked like we might have only a quarter of our young people back at the high school. So we make the best decision possible with the resources we have. But our expectation is, as we continue to populate, is to bring our workers back. That's the goal.
Because how many security guards did we have at the high school prior to us closing down?
Last year, we had about five. And let me just give you a little context on that. We have five security guards and two resource officers. Now, in my previous district, I had two high schools that had 1,600 kids. There was one resource officer between both schools and one security guard between both schools, and these were urban school districts. But it's all about having the right support staff in place to be more proactive. And if you have a lot of reaction, reactionary staff on board, then that's where that you kind of contribute to that school, the prison pipeline. So our goal is to really heavily invest in those restorative practices, which is law. That went to law in 2017, that you must consider restorative practices. Let me just give you a little bit of data. When we looked at our, I met with the executive director of a juvenile detention right here in Marion County, and while 13% of our young people make up the population, we make up over 50% of the young people that are incarcerated. So what I'm going to do and ensure, especially with our Department of Student Support Services, that we have all the resources in place to be proactive and get our young people to change their behavior over time, which they're doing a phenomenal job. I've been at all of our basketball, our kids are really knocking it out. Our kids are really knocking it out the park. But we got to re-look and redistribute the resources of our human personnel.
Yes, and I do understand that. But I guess we can, you know, continue to have the conversation about it because even with the security guard, some of the roles that, you know, with what it's going to take to make sure that it's safe, that it's clean, that it is clear, and all of those different things, some of those responsibilities can be added. But I'll just continue to listen to see how we're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Triplet. Is there, are there, are there any other?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead. You have the floor, Trustee Rocket Martin.
Dr. Townsend, how were your surveys administered? Were they online or did you guys send out?
Yeah, we tried different. We emailed, we also put it on our Facebook page, we made phone calls. I know, you know, we reached out. We do know that we can do better with our family and community engagement, and that definitely will be a part of our communication plan as we move forward. Some things, we get a lot of responses on, some things we don't. That's just how it's been so far, and that's just room for improvement for us.
Okay. I was just thinking, I know when we wanted information back from the high school post, we usually sent it home with our elementary students because most of them have brothers and sisters in the lower Ls. And the little kids always brought back their information. They would always make sure their parents got it, and they would always bring it back to school. So I don't know, that may be an avenue you might want to consider using.
Absolutely. I think the challenge in this case is that our high school young people have been out all year. So we didn't have that, even for parent-teacher conferences. Everything's just different, but we will strengthen that as we move forward.
So, Dr. Townsend?
Go ahead, Secretary.
I'm sorry. Dr. Townsend, will you all continue to reach out to the parents as before the 22nd, or before the designated date? Will you all continue to get more parents? Because 35 is a very alarming number to me.
Yeah, the goal is to continue to reach out. Additionally, we also extended the in-person learning window for young people to opt in. So it's no issue to continue to reach out and to keep that open as much as possible. That's good data to have, and I definitely want it.
And Secretary Triplet, you should be able to access the... One second, Trustee Buchanan, just one second. Secretary Triplet, you should be able to access the presentation now. I had it updated, so you should be able to open that on that link. Go ahead, Trustee Buchanan.
Okay, I would like to say good afternoon. When I was on my computer, a lot of static. But until Dr. Townsend, you need to put something in the paper on 105.3. Because a lot of times, people don't read the paper, they don't listen to the radio. Somebody asked me the other day, and I said, well, I ain't showing the board. I said, yes, but they got now in-house school. So maybe you should try to get the parents, get the message. Because like somebody, Ms. Rocket Martin said earlier, the young people are going to take the note home. Older people are not. So you need to put it on 105.3. You've got Miss Morning gossip with Shereen, and then, you know, all through that day to put it on the radio.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, are there any other questions, comments, or concerns for Dr. Townsend regarding the high school return to face-to-face? All right, thank you. Dr. Townsend, you can move on to COVID protocols and procedures.
Absolutely. So I'm going to give this presentation, but I do also want to know that on August 24, 2020, this presentation was also in video format to our district that we shared on Facebook. It did get about 2,000 views to our families. But I definitely want to continue to message how safe our buildings are because our high school is coming back to face-to-face. I want to reassure and get confidence from our community that we're doing the best we can to be as safe as we possibly can. And so far, so good. Very impressed with our staff here. So in August 2020, our district was required to develop and submit a return-to-learn plan for state approval. After following a process of convening the superintendent's task force, surveying parents, students, and staff, Benson Harbor Area Schools decided to return the virtual blended face-to-face format. The options were for parents to have K-8 face-to-face and K-8 virtual. Further recommendations supported delaying face-to-face at the high school level. And more information was provided about the health and safety of our young people. The health and safety preparedness, next page. All classrooms in our district have been decluttered and reduced to only necessary items. If you paid attention to a lot of our news stories on ABC 57 and also WSBT, when they're in the classrooms, you can see how it's safely set up. Each classroom is set up with 12 desks that are spaced six feet apart and wall hand sanitizer units mounted in every classroom. Each teacher received a five-gallon bucket of 800 wipes. I had the privilege of walking all of our board members through all of our campuses at the elementary level, and they were able to see that in action with also the six-foot steps on the ground. Each builder received six standing portable hand sanitizing units for the hallway and office usage. All buildings were required to designate an isolation room. All buildings were required to identify entrance and exit points to manage the direction and flow of foot traffic. And that's also in place here at the high school, one way in, one way out. All buildings received floor and wall social distancing stickers and posters to ensure directionality and spacing. Each designated entry point, next page, required temperature checks. Students who use the bus are required to have temperature checks before exiting. The preparedness plan prohibits the use of lockers to avoid congregations, the use of backpacks, which may potentially be flexible when some of our young people come with their laptops. We're still working out the kinks on that, especially at this high school level. In-person meetings, all meetings are virtual until June 2021. The use of the cafeteria, all meals are packaged and grab-and-go. And also, that always was a best practice, even in the past with the breakfast in the classroom. Right now, breakfast is grab-and-go to reduce congregating in the cafeteria. The mixing of classes using a pod concept. Our district provides personal protection equipment, face masks for all students and staff upon request, handheld thermometers upon request, room sanitizing, offer close-contact reports using the Clorox 360 machine. That machine, you got to see that, that's a beautiful machine. It looks pretty cool, too. And our daily room and common area cleaning, our maintenance staff doing a phenomenal job keeping us healthy and safe in here. The more recent developments and updates are, we hired a district nurse in November, and our district nurse oversee all of our health-related COVID-19 concerns. Benson Harbor Area Schools participated in a pilot to receive the first vaccinations in the area, and antigen testing is now available upon request. Also, if you recall, we had a testing facility out back at the high school. And up to December, we have received over 4,000 individuals were tested. Now, those 4,000 tests, over 1,000 individuals were identified of having COVID-19 who were tested back there. So shout-out to Benson Harbor Area Schools and our partnership with Spectrum Health to get that set up. Specific to the high school return, in addition to all of the precautions described, the high school will designate each stairwell as either up or down direction. There are four youth advocated, an in-school suspension supervisor, and behavioral specialists will be assigned to a quadrant of the school for continuous monitoring of the hallways. And a great thing about that is that my office is in the high school. And ladies and gentlemen, I do believe in all hands on deck, and I'm going to get in where I fit in to ensure that we are successful right here at the high school. That concludes the health and safety precautions in our preparedness plan for face-to-face learning. Thank you, President Robinson.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Townsend. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the COVID protocols and procedures in place for in-school learning? Any questions regarding the COVID protocols from the board?
President Robinson? Did our, was our teachers who are currently in our, in particular, elementary teachers, were they really, were they active part of this particular portion of the plan? Because they have actually been in the building. So, I mean, have their input been into consideration? And their thoughts, and what have you? Because, like I said, going back over the plan and getting an opportunity to look at it, I'll probably have some more questions. But I wanted to know how much interaction was taken or how much information was given by the teachers who are currently K-8 that have been in the building and working in the buildings?
That's a great question, President, Secretary Triplet. We have constant communication with our teacher leadership teams, specifically even today at 4:30, every second Tuesday, excuse me, every first Tuesday of the month, we meet with our teachers' union, and we address any and all questions, comments, or concerns. Their input was taken into consideration when these plans were developed at the beginning. And so far, you know, we've been impressed with what they've been doing at the elementary and middle school level, as well as what our principals have been doing with regard to their leadership. So we'll continue to keep our superintendent's task force open and continue to have opportunity for input from each stakeholder in our district, especially.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your questions, Secretary Triplet. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns from the board regarding the COVID protocols? You have the floor, Trustee.
Well, I don't know if it's a question or comment. Thank you. I was just thinking about the presentation. And I'm going to be honest, looking at this, with four youth advocates, ISS person, a behavior, there are six individuals that, you know, are in the to help our students at the high school. And to only have made contact with 35 parents, you know, I don't want to say, I don't know, it's very alarming and it's something to think about that we, you know, we haven't made contact with 10% of the parents. And so, which is still a very low number. And so I guess my comment is, I would hope that, you know, like you said, all hands on deck, we can make contact with those parents. Because what I don't want to happen is that, okay, now our students have signed themselves up. I mean, basically, that's what we're saying. You know, we have almost 200 students, 170, I think, students signed up for virtual, but we've only made contact with 35 parents? Or are we sending only 35 parents to take the survey? I just want to kind of clear that up so that, you know, as people are watching and listening, you know, this is something that's in my mind. And so if you can just clear that up, if you would, and then, you know, I would like to, you know, encourage, you know, the team to continue to try to make those contacts with parents because, you know, I think as we communicate, you know, that these are students, our children. And, you know, many of our parents worked and, you know, have obligations outside of the home. And so our parents need to know what's going on in our community. You know, we've had a large, you know, wave of violence. And so I think it's important, you know, that we keep all of those things in mind as we move.
Yeah. I think you're spot-on, Treasury, Treasury Creighton. I'll be honest with you, when I look at our social media engagement, the videos that we put out, we have hundreds and thousands of views. But I do notice that our engagement is very, very low on the survey. So, for example, one video we put up probably was shared over 100 times or whatever communicated. But a post about the survey probably had like two shares. So the stuff is hitting the timeline, but some things just don't get shared. So we will be creative as a district to ensure that we can engage our families on some of, some important data that we need to make really informed decisions. I think we definitely will improve on that, and we can improve. Just something like, for example, a couple of days ago, this week, as a matter of fact, Monday yesterday, I was at Main Street Market, one of the gas stations. I ran into a number of our parents of high school students. And I said, hey, did you do the survey? You coming back? So, oh, we don't know, we still undecided. And I know I needed that information a long time ago. But I do know that they just haven't done it. And that's no issue. I mean, I understand where they are. You know, I was talking to one of my young boys, as a matter of fact, who was 18, who said, you know, I still haven't did the survey or I did not register to come back. I'm like, well, you know, the deadline is XYZ. He said, yeah, I know, but, and I understand, you know, it's a pandemic, we're trying to figure it out. But I'm in their faces. I'm at Walmart with them, I'm at Myers with them. You know, I constantly get stopped in some of these places. And I'm a billboard, communicating what we are trying to have for the district. And I'm confident that over time, we'll be better there. I think it's a culture of communication that we must develop as a district so we can get the return on investment when we put out the different information and surveys that we need. But I think it's good. It's unacceptable to me, low numbers, but that's the data we have so far. But we continue to fight to get more.
Thank you, Secretary Creighton, for your comment and your response, Dr. Townsend. Do we have any other questions or comments from the board regarding the COVID protocols?
I do have another question as it relates to the teachers in the survey. I guess I'm just focusing in on that because, number one, if we have teachers who are not interested in coming back or want to remain virtual or have whatever reasons within the parameters to get an information from 100% of our employees, right? From our teachers and what have you. So we should be able to get that information. So we're still working on it. So probably hopefully by next week, we'll have response from all of our teachers and what their feelings are.
That's the goal. Hopefully, we can get better numbers on all the categories, even with our students, because we have over 500 kids and only about 250 ever reply. That's the goal, Secretary Triplet, and all of our board of trustees, is getting the information that we need. But the good news and what I'm proud of with our team here, with the information we have, we was able to put something together. I did not want anything to be a reason why we didn't have a plan. But we're going to continue to get as many responses as we possibly can. You know, I'll continue to talk to our families at the local markets within the community. And we are continuing to reach out through email, telephone, and social media. It's all there. It's about the response and the engagement. And I'm confident that over time, we'll build that culture of quick response, a lot of response. But just right now, we're not there yet, and that's nobody's fault. We're going to, you kind of farm and storm through this together, and we'll get there over time.
All right, thank you.
I have a question for you, Dr. Townsend. I know that we have concentric that goes out and checks on the students as it relates to virtual learning. I'm not sure whether or not the grant that was utilized to hire them could be used to inform them of this survey as well when those contacts are made? Is that something that's feasible?
Unfortunately, we're not allowed to right now because the memorandum of understanding specifically to re-engage students through the virtual learning environment. But we can't use them for that because that's kind of double-dipping, going against the contract. But we can be creative with our student advocates that we do have that continue to do home visits to make that a part of their agenda. So we got to build it out, you know. Trust me, I do believe our team will come up with a creative way to get more response. But this is where we are so far.
All right, awesome. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board for Dr. Townsend?
Just maybe a helpful comment. Can you use your robo-system to call the parents on their telephones or text them? Text this number and take a survey? I mean, I get them all the time from places and people that I don't even know. So most folks use their cell phones for a lot of things. So is that something that we could look into doing?
Yes, we can explore that option. I don't know, that may be a particular cost for that type of technology. We're using what we have on our fingertips with our remind apps and our Google surveys. But I think, you know, we can explore other opportunities. I see Paul put in the comment that it was already done. So he did find a way to send some text survey communication, but it still was limited. But we're not going to stop there, Trustee Rocket. As a superintendent, I'm not satisfied with low responses, but that's what it is. And it's a good starting point for us to know how we can get better, be a little more strategic and creative and innovative, how we reach our families with some important information that we need.
Thank you for your suggestion, Trustee Rocket Martin. Any other questions, comments, or concerns from the board regarding the COVID protocols? Okay, thank you for that portion. Dr. Townsend, can you continue with the Graduation Alliance contract?
Yes, Graduation Alliance contract. Now, ladies and gentlemen of the community and our board of trustees, I want to pre-message this. There's nothing that's probably going to come to the board next week, but we're looking to have a contract potentially to come to board approval. Let me tell you what Graduation Alliance is. Graduation Alliance is something that a lot of highly... Uh, Graduation Alliance is something that a lot of highly effective school districts use to support some of our most needy students. So, for example, um, as a former assistant superintendent in one of our alternative programming, we use Graduation Alliance for some of our young people that did not fit in the traditional setting or alternative setting. It was literally an opportunity to recover some of our young people that dropped out. It was the last option. And as we know, we do have a alternative school uh and potential traditional high school coming to town um in the fall. And their goal and their niche is to, you know, really focus on that dropout class. Uh, but guess what? I'm not just gonna let that slide and we not support our young people. So Graduation Alliance is um the understanding that we know there's no one size fit all solution to education. So they have a program from dropout recovery to alternative education academies to fully credited online private schools and fully developed workforce diploma programs. Um, it's a highly effective program uh that we can have to support some of our most needy students that do not fit in our alternative setting and traditional setting. Um, and we do not want that low hanging fruit to be there uh for a charter to kind of scoop up um and say that we're not doing what we're supposed to do. Our young people that come through Benson Harbor area schools, if they don't go through our traditional setting, if they don't have an opportunity to complete our alternative setting, we will have a a safety net with the Graduation Alliance to give our young people some personal one-on-one tutoring and personal check-in from counselors. It's a highly effective program. I really can't wait to get this information in front of you guys. Um, and this is a win for our high school students. Um, as a former high school principal, I wish I had this in my school um to prevent some of our young people that did not make it through our traditional alternative setting. Um, and also that strengthens us as a district of how we can educate and support our students. Um, so I'm pre-messaging this. There's nothing to show right now. Uh, we are getting a contract drafted up. More than happy to provide our Board of Education with more literature, uh, maybe in our weekly update, uh, so you can have more information about who Graduation Alliance is and what they do for young people across the country.
Okay, so thank you for the the pre-message on that. Is there any questions currently with the information that he's provided? I know he said we're gonna get something more detailed later, but does anyone have any initial questions at this point?
I just have a comment, President Robinson.
You have the floor, Trustee Bones.
I feel optimistic about that, you know, in business, you have to not give room to your competitors. And we have to own it. This is our community. We can't let nobody else come in and take our babies anymore. We allowed that long enough. And we do have a a large portion that goes to the wayside. And we forget about them. So I'm optimistic and excited to learn more about that program.
Awesome. Thank you for that. It it's it's a win for us, trust. Well, I'm not gonna say trusty. It's a win for us. And I hope you uh come to that conclusion when you see the information.
Okay, thank you for your comment, Trustee Bones. Does anyone else have any additional comments, questions or concerns for Dr. Townsall regarding the Graduation Alliance contract? All right, thank you, Dr.
I do have a uh, I do have a question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Treasure.
I was re- okay, I was reading somewhere that we have a partnership with Conexus regarding alternative education. And so would this program um potentially eliminate that partnership?
So we have a partnership with Conexus through our adult education programming. They're they're alternative educations, the Bridge Academy. And they had a partnership with Marion Springs and Marion Springs let them go. Um, and they were looking for a district to partner, which it should be us, uh, but I believe uh because of the past, they uh did not reach out to us. But we are in negotiation and conversation with potentially partnering with Conexus um and alternative programming. Uh, but um, in the event that that doesn't work, we're we're still gonna get it done for our kids.
Uh, President, I'm sorry.
Well, I guess that's what the great area is for me, you know. I guess that's what I'm asking. So if we're, we have a partnership with our competitors, but then we create another program to put the same thing as the partnership. And I'm not against the program. I don't know, you know, anything about the Graduation Alliance. I need to clear up my business in my head.
Yeah, we we don't, we have our own alternative school, which is Cape. Bridge Academy is an alternative school. If this new charter school come to the district, their alternative programming will be provided by Conexus through the Bridge Academy. We don't work with the Bridge Academy. So Conexus is an umbrella and there's multiple programs under the job for America, the job program, adult education and alternative aid. We don't have alternative education partnership with them.
Well, we have an adult aid partnership with them.
Yes.
And I, so that's what I'm asking, so.
Okay, go ahead, Treasure Creighton. I'm sorry, there was just an echo.
Your mic, your mic is muted, Trustee, uh, Treasure Creighton.
I'm sorry. Okay, so I guess that's what I'm asking. So will this potentially eliminate that partnership with them? We could then now provide our own adult education program?
So no, this would not eliminate the adult aid. That's his own separate entity.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, and Secretary Tripple, is you unmuted for a second? Were you trying to make a comment or add to the discussion?
No, I've just been, uh, for some unknown reason, all of a sudden, you know, my screen just got huge and I couldn't move and anything. So I just went to, um, I went to my phone and came back, you know, I'm just working. I'm working with this thing, trying to figure this thing out.
Okay.
I'm gonna turn me into the Geek Squad. I'm gonna come have to get to y'all computer to what's happening.
Right, right.
And I just want to say regarding uh Dr. Townsall's presentation this evening, um, I I apologize that you weren't able to access the presentation, but if you have questions that you want clarified prior to our next meeting, make sure you shoot those to me so we can get those clarifications for you, Secretary Tripple.
Most definitely. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other questions, comments or concerns regarding Dr. Townsall's presentation or the Graduation Alliance? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna move on to Mr. Johnson with the monthly financial reports.
Thank you. In this evening is the electronic packet. You've got the monthly financial reports for the month of January. And uh, as before, the reason for board considerations, we provide the financial reports to the Board of Education each month. And next week, we'll be recommending that the board approve a motion to approve the January twenty twenty one payments for all the funds listed on the sheet below totaling one million, one hundred ninety thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and sixty cents. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have regarding any of the reports.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And just to clarify for anyone that is tuning in, that didn't tune in to our previous meetings before, most recently last year or in the middle of the year, we went to one board meeting a month. We have decided effective this year that we're splitting our meetings. So you're you're used to seeing us entering a vote after a report is provided, but what we've decided is to have a work session on the first Tuesday of the month and a board meeting on the second Tuesday of the month. So this is just an opportunity for the Board of Education to discuss the reports and enter their questions, comments and concerns and get clarifications. And then we actually take vote next week in our standard board meeting. Uh, it does anyone on the board have any questions, comments or concerns for Mr. Johnson regarding the monthly financial reports? Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
You're welcome.
And our human resources department does not have a report this uh for our work session. Currently, we're gonna move on to Dr. Shelton with the Extended Learning Plan update.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
For the munch- for the March board meeting, regular board meeting for next week, we will present, as always, our our reconfirmation of the plan that we are using. Um, go ahead. At our last board meeting, we gave you an update on the data collection of the N W A map. And um, we also noted on that presentation that we were doing in the middle of makeups. So um, our schools worked really hard to get students in. Uh, at the time, we did have five areas graded in in math and E L A that we actually had, we didn't have growth. Um, from now that we have a makeup set, you can go ahead and hit all the slides. Third grade math, I'm sorry, third grade reading is the only area that uh we continue to be uh a little, a little behind our growth targets. Our weekly interaction rates, uh, if you notice, uh, for this past week uh have improved dramatically. And that's because the data collection around it and some um uh power school errors have been taken care of. Deck had consistently had low numbers, but we were looking at the raw data and we knew their numbers weren't that low. We realized, we worked with Risa over the last couple of weeks that there are certain, they weren't, it wasn't picking up certain kids. I have no idea why, but that was corrected. And so at this last, this last week, you can see the numbers. They look much better. And um, I I do have a note on the uh original document about Cape. And Cape eh in in the previous uh presentations, Cape had some low scores, but we were pulling the wrong data again for them. They are a virtual school. They've been a virtual school for two years. And they actually fall under a different data reporting um requirement. And we were pulling the data incorrectly. So now we finally have one, our corrections in uh Power School and two, finally pulling the right data sets for each of them. So overall, our weekly interaction rates that we have to keep posted um are are up and they do look good. And next week, we've already submitted to the state. We have to submit to the state every month before this board meeting what our instructional delivery is. And we have no changes. We do not uh, we do not say changes until we actually have changes. So although that we are going to be um uh virtual and face-to-face nine twelve on March twenty second, uh, we already certified for this month. And so that's what we're presenting. Uh, that change will happen next month uh at the board meeting. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify for the public, in next week's meeting, there will be a space for public comment regarding the Extended Learning Plan. Be prior to us uh voting to reconfirm the Extended Learning Plan. So if you have any comments that you'd like to add regarding this section next week, you want to be in attendance for that. But I will allow the Board of Education to ask any questions, uh, make comments or indicate any concerns that they may have.
Or President, I do have a question.
You have the floor.
I don't know if it's, well, yeah. Um, Dr. Shelton.
Yes.
With the data that you said was not getting corrected, it was a, you guys didn't know it was a system glitch. Did we report that to the state, that incorrect data, or did we have to amend the data that, once we got it corrected?
No, we just go back. We will go back and amend that in our report. Um, we only collected data for transparency reasons. It's not uploaded to the state in any way that affects any of our F T Es, any of our funding. So now that the deck glitch has been taken care of, we actually can go back and recalculate.
Okay, thank you so much. You have a great day.
Thank you, Trustee Bones. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. I can hear you now. You have the floor. Secretary Tripple, I, you can have, you have the floor. You you re-muted, but you, go ahead.
Yes, this is, this this is where for Dr. Shelton. Um, um, as you stated earlier that they had um that they were, that there were times when they were pulling the wrong, pulling the data and there were some um problems with it. Did we, did we go back and look at? Hold on one minute. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, this question is for Dr. Shelton. When it, um, when it said that they were pulling the wrong data and what have you, did we go back and look at all of our schools and what have you to make sure that we didn't have any of those situations happening just for to uh make sure we have the right data because our scores might go up, but we'll get more information?
No, we know the others were correct. We identified Dex as being incorrect because we were looking at one data set and it wasn't matching the other. All of our other data sets at the schools match.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Okay, thank you for your question, Secretary Tripple. Is there any other questions, comments or concerns from the board regarding the Extended Learning Plan update? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to Mr. Miller, who is going to provide our Concentric Educational Solutions update.
Thank you, President Robinson. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, so a update for our Concentric Educational Solutions uh partner. Um, we looked at our first semester and we had uh two hundred and seventy-one home visits conducted for two hundred and forty-two of our students. One hundred and thirty are uh hard contact where we met with a parent or guardian. One hundred and twenty-four were soft contacts where they left a letter at the home. And seventeen was no contact. So on the infographic, you will see uh students that have been re-engaged into our school system, virtually or in person. Um, out of the two hundred and forty-two students, one hundred and twenty-eight students have been re-engaged. That's over uh fifty percent. Uh, students that transferred out, out of the two hundred and forty-two, nine students transferred out of our district. And the meetings that was uh conducted with our buildings uh and the principals and support staff, we had three, uh thirty-two uh meetings with Concentric in our building uh staff so far this semester, this past semester. That's, that's it for that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller. Do we have any questions, comments or concerns regarding the Concentric Educational Solutions update?
Yes, uh, President Robinson, I do have a couple of questions for for Mr. Miller.
Well, hey, you have the floor, Secretary Tripple.
Okay, so Mr. Miller, you say fifty percent um the goal, they they met fifty percent of the goal that they have. What was the initial? Uh, when you looked at the contract, what what was the initial um um expected outcome at least? Uh, can you give me the initial?
Yeah, so in the contract, it was seven to ten percent of re-engagement. So there are over fifty percent of the students that we have identified uh from our buildings.
I think that is excellent. That's some excellent data. And I think that, you know, as we get, as we go forward, just to be able to keep monitoring so we can hear some, you know, some concrete data as to how this is actually working. I also have another question.
Can I say something real quick before your next question? I do want to give a major shout out to our advocates in the building because with what we already have in place, in addition to uh the support with Concentric, it really helped us level up. So we got five times the bang on our buck um because of what the work we were already doing as a district. So that's a big shout out to our staff in general.
Thank you so very, very much, Dr. Townsall. So, Mr. Miller, I have another question. So you you work directly with Co-Centric. So do we have um a truancy department or do we have truancy officers at each school um in our district? But how does, how how does that sound out? How does that look?
So we do not have a truancy department. Uh, we we do have youth advocates. We have uh restorative specialists in our buildings that also go out and do home visits. Uh, so like Dr. Townsall said, you know, it it has been a um a team effort, you know, because our buildings are doing, conducting home visits as well with Concentric. So these are just the numbers that Concentric has done, but our buildings are doing an amazing job as well.
Yes, I'm gonna ask a question. Is there anything uh that they could really, really work more intensely with one another? Are they, I mean, or let me ask the question. Are they working with those particular um our truancy officers and our support staff? Um, have they had the opportunity to work directly with uh Co-Centric? Because I think if those two entities come together and really put together, I think that we'll probably even get uh better results.
Yeah, so for every, before they go out and do their home visit. Yeah, so for every, before they go out and do their home visits, they meet with the team, the, the support staff team for each building. So when Concentric, they work in directly with me, but they work in with the building. So I set up all the meetings for, you know, pre-visits and then after they do the home visits, post-visit meetings. So they are working together, getting the data back to the school and the school is getting the information to Concentric. Before they go out to the, to do the home visits.
Okay, well, thank you so very, very much. I'm just, I've just been following the data and I, and I've seen some great things. You know, when you're talking about the percentage and what it, what it started, what was the expected outcome? And they far exceeded that. So hopefully it'll continue to get better and that this work will be able to continue in partnership with the school district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Robinson.
Yes, ma'am, give me one quick second, trustee Buchanan. I just want to thank Secretary Triplett for his questions and Mr. Miller for providing those clarifications. And you have the floor, trustee Buchanan, go ahead. Trustee Buchanan, you can unmute now, go ahead with your, with your question or clarification.
Can you hear me?
I sure can.
Can you hear me now? Okay, I would just like to say to all, all the people that's working hard. We, we need our students and I would like to give a shout out to Mr. Miller and that staff. For going in the community and talking to the parents. That means like we, as a board member, I'm only one person, but I stand behind those people. But we definitely need our students back in school. And we had some, one boy tell me, guess what, Mr. Buchanan, you're gonna be happy. I said, what, why? Because I'm back, I'm going back to school, that's good. So keep the work, keep it going and the board will stand behind you. Just one board member can speak for herself, thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Buchanan, for your comments and support. Any other questions, comments or concerns regarding the Concentric Educational Solutions update? Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller, you can move on to the next topic.
Our next topic, we have a reinstatement of one of our students that was expelled from our district last year. And we will discuss this at the, the regular board meeting next week to be voted on.
Alrighty, thank you. And winter sports update, do you have updates for us currently or will that be next week?
I have updates for us currently. So for our boys basketball team, they're doing a great job. Record is seven and one. They had a great come from behind game against Gold Lake where they made the last second shot at the buzzer to take a 60 to 59 victory. We had to cancel a game against Grand Rapids homeschool that was scheduled for tomorrow. Since they play games in Indiana and they do not wear masks, we canceled that game for the safety of our students. So we replaced that game with Lansing Everett on March the 4th. And our boys are currently, has ranked as high as number three in the state. So they've been doing a great job and bringing some excitement to our district. The girls' basketball team record is two and two. All the games have been very competitive with the girls. Want to give a shout out to some of the, some of the players, student athletes. Jemaya Jordan, she is averaging 13 points per game with five rebounds. Desiree Cows averaging 10 points a game, 10 rebounds. And they both are sophomores. And talking to the coach and athletic director, they have a very bright future in athletics and basketball. And due to the pandemic, there will be the first time where boys and girls. District will be played in the same week this year. So they will play the same week for district basketball. Previously, the girls will play a week before the boys. And Ben Harbor will host the girls' district and boys will be at Coloma this year. For wrestling, their record is five and six. Last year, they did not win any individual, any dual meets. So it's a big improvement of this year. I want to shout out some of the student athletes. Dash Harris Moore, he's currently 13 and O, ranked number seven in the state for Division Three. Michael Kirby is five and one, he a first year wrestler. Marlon Bowman is five and one. Jordan Henry is five and three. Anthony Gary Gray is six and four, first year wrestler. And the wrestlers will be in dual meets in the districts at South Haven this year. And we still looking for a host for individual districts. So more information will come. Soon, and the spring sports has been pushed back a week to March the 22nd. And MHSAA is still looking for possible new dates for state tournaments. And Ben Harbor is currently looking for a track coach and a softball coach. And that's it, that's ended up updates.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, comments or concerns from Mr. Miller? I just want to say that I love when we, when we recognize our students at our meetings. Often we are handling the business of the board and, and dealing with serious matters. But I think it's important that our students have an opportunity to know that we appreciate their successes. So I just thank you for including that information in your presentation.
Uh, trustee Robinson, I was wondering, because I want to shout out to. Kent Trail Poons, I think his name, Apulium, for his three foot shot, his three footer, his three pointer. That he shot 20, what was it, 28 feet away or whatever, 28 feet away. In the game against Muskegon and Benton Harbor, and we won that game because of that shot. Good job. I was really happy to see it and excited. So I'd like to give a shout out to Kevin Kent Trail, I'm sorry.
Absolutely. Treasurer Buchanan, you were muted for a second. Were you attempting to make a comment or unmuted for a second? Did you have something to say, trustee Buchanan? Okay, possibly not. Okay, moving along, next we have on the agenda, old business. Okay, go ahead, trustee. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to add to that, two of our students, senior boys on the basketball team, the governor recognized them. Along with the other schools. That was, what's their name? I got their name. Me, one was Meeks and the other was Pulya. So they got recognition from the governor.
Yes, ma'am, and I, I would anticipate that Dr. Townsend was gonna provide information about that in his announcement. So thank you so much for ensuring that we don't acknowledge them as well.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, no sorry. Okay.
I think we, like I said, we are on the same road, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. We have some amazing students, so I love when we have good news to share in our meetings.
Trustee Robinson, is it, is it, I have some more shout, but I, I didn't know if I should give them now or wait into the regular board session.
You can, you can do them both. Are they pertaining to the, the sports updates?
Uh, no, therefore later on. So for, for other accomplishments.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, for other accomplishments. So maybe I'll just wait for next, for the end when you ask for comments from us.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much. Anyone for, do we have anything for old business? Okay, hearing none, do we have anything for new business? I had one topic to discuss. I received a clarification regarding today's agenda concerning our committee meetings. And then also Treasurer Creighton asked about them as well. So the way that we have it set up currently is that we do our work session agenda, but our committee reports are not included in the work session. The committee reports are given at our regular board meeting next week. And I wanted to see what everyone's opinions are regarding that. I, we in February had them at both meetings. And so this month I decided to have them at just the regular board meeting. But I wanted to give everyone an opportunity to give input on whether they think we should do them on both meetings or only in the work session? Or if you all would like to see it done differently than what we're currently doing. So I'll open the floor to that discussion if anyone has any input on it.
I would like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Treasurer Creighton.
When we explored the option of having a work session, I think it was to increase the communication and to. Potentially, you know, be able to go over things and they have time before voting on them. And so my concern with waiting to, to the regular board meeting before we give those committee reports. And we don't actually have time to go and get, get more information or do research. Prior to making the vote. And so keeping that in mind. Like I said, I thought that we were going to do them on the committee, on the committee. On the work session week and not on the voting week. So that we, you know, could have time to go over them and then we can receive clarification. And I think we also spoke about that last month during them for this week.
Okay, and I, I value your opinion on that. I, I did double check the minutes and the, the clarification that I noted in the meeting on 39 when we gave the. Updates for the second time is that we would be doing them on our regular board meeting. But I have no, I have no objection to us including them on the work session board meeting. Would you want us to do them both meetings or just at the work session meeting? Treasurer Creighton.
Well, for, for, for me, I was thinking at the work session so that, you know, we can get, we'll have a week, you know, to receive clarification on something. Because right now, no one on the board knows what happened in the committee. And so if there is a staff report that'll come forward next week, then we won't have time. You know, we'll have to take the vote potentially before or after the committee report is given.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments on the committee report placements?
President Robinson.
Go ahead, you have the floor, Secretary Triplett.
Yes, I was thinking, my, my thought was that I think that it would be good for us to have the committee reports on the work session. Agenda as Treasurer Creighton stated as well. It'll give us an opportunity, first of all, to present some of the things. And if anybody have any questions or concerns, they'll have clarification a week in advance prior to us having to take a vote. The next week on anything, you know, that our various committees would bring to the table. I don't know if we have anything that's scheduled for next week to be voted on from the, from the committee meeting and reports. But I think it would be good for us to continue to see it at this particular juncture. And then next week, we'll be able to have enough time to go through and look at things. And we'll be able to ask more questions to be able to make informed decisions. So I would like to see it on both meetings. Or even, even if, if nothing else, on this meeting so that we can do the discussions prior to the actual meeting where we do the voting and what have.
Okay, do we, thank you so much for your input, Secretary Triplett. Do we have any other comments? I don't want everyone an opportunity, go ahead, trustee, I'm sorry, Vice President Bradley.
I was just going to say, I, I don't mind it being one meeting. Because I do notice that in the superintendent updates, he does put a lot what was discussed at the committee meetings in his updates. Like if we do it on the work session meeting, that's fine because then we can discuss if we have anything to vote. But most of the times I do sit in, in the update. So and instead of having a repeat of a lot of the information at two meetings, it would just be best to do one. That's my thing.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Bradley. Any other input? Trustee Raquette Martin or trustee Bowens or trustee Buchanan, do you all have any?
Yeah, I agree to that for the reasons that have already been stated, that the work session I think would be best. So it gives us like a, a chance to see the information ahead of time. So I'll agree to that.
Trustee Bowens, do you have any input?
I concur.
Okay, I heard, I heard you can, your concurrence, trustee Bowens, go ahead, go ahead, trustee Buchanan. You have the floor, trustee Buchanan.
Can you hear me?
I sure can, go ahead.
Hello?
You have.
Okay, I would just like to say, keep it at two meetings. I mean, because you have, people in the community are like fans of, over the years, I used to always give 110%. I wanted to talk to you about that. People in our community need to get, have good news. They need to hear things that our students are doing. So maybe they could come back. We got to do something to not give them dinners every week. But anybody that has something nice to say about our students or the teacher should, you know, we should come, come together and, and let them be known that. Mr. Triplett, he baked a cake for the president or whatever. So we need to continue to show, a show off our community. And we have wonderful giving people out there.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much. Secretary Triplett, I'll be looking for my cake. Ms. Buchanan indicated that you, you begged for me, I'll be waiting for that.
That was an example, that wasn't a real thing.
I, I, I'm doing, I'm, I'm, I'm cooking and I'm doing the thing. So you know, we'll see how that works later on after COVID is over.
Trustee Robinson, haven't you heard that saying, you can't have your cake and eat it too?
Buchanan said, I have a cake, so I'll be waiting for it. Okay, so, so as a point of reference and clarification, would you, are our trustees available, our board chairs of our committees? Would you all be, are you available now or ready now to provide your committee reports? Or would you like to just include them next week and we just make the adjustment moving forward, starting April?
I would say start in April because I, I don't have my reports in front of me.
Okay, so we, so being that everyone gave opinion, the, the overwhelming majority was that we. Will have our committee reports on the work session week effective April moving forward, just so our chairs are prepared for that. And then that way, if there is any additional clarifications or anything that's needed from those reports or any clarifications from the reports that support the staff reports that we vote on. We'll have an opportunity to have that discussion. Prior to anything that we have to take vote on in our official board meeting. So you will notice on your April agenda, you will have your reports on the three, on the work session. And then we will take votes on the staff reports provided at the regular board meeting moving forward. So thank you all for that suggestion. And I believe it was Secretary Triplett that, that first asked for clarification and then Treasurer Creighton asking for clarification. At the beginning of this meeting, we want to make sure that we're doing what is best for the full board. So I am, I have no objection to doing that. And I'm not a committee chair, if you all have noticed. So I, I don't have any authority on when you all give your reports. I'm, I'm more than open to when you all want to provide those and that works for me.
So next, so next week, President Robinson, we will be, for the, for March, we will, we will get the reports next week. Is that not correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And I know that often you all have the updates from your reports. Prior to when you share them with us. So if you want to forward those on to me and then do a blind copy of the board so that they can review those prior to the meeting, that'll work as well. Okay, any, anything else for new business? Okay, hearing none, we are going to proceed and move forward to open public comment. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Today, there were two areas for comment on the agenda of which you may decide when to speak. We had open public comment or public comment on agenda items only earlier and currently it is open public comment. Per policy 0167.3, which governs board participation at board meetings. We request that you preface your comments by an announcement of your name, address and group affiliation when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minute duration. And you all will notice we have the timer set on the screen. No participant may speak more than once during this meeting. Participants shall. No participant may speak more than once during this meeting. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. The board will listen, take comments and questions under advisement and not respond at this time. I, as president, will refer questions to the superintendent for research and response. If you have specific questions for the board or executive team that require follow up, please email those directly to liz.goodwin at Benton Harbor area schools dot org. Currently, I am going to open the floor for open public comment.
Yes, my name is Sharon James and I live at seven 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 Napier in Benton Harbor.
Okay.
Thank you, President Robinson. I was listening to uh Mr. Miller's report, and I really appreciate the work that Co-Centrix is doing for the district. However, I have a concern after listening to that data as well as some of the other information that was shared throughout this meeting in terms of students who um potentially may not fall in a traditional graduation track. I'm wondering, um, because you also talked about your support staff handling a portion of that work. And I'm just wondering, is there a point of disconnect in the communication with what Co-Centrix is providing to the district? How does the district then take that information and help to remediate some of the things that Co-Centrix is showing them as problematic, such as those students who are transferring out? Or I don't know whether or not they're able to see students who are possibly just dropping out. I don't know what that looks like, but I I know that it doesn't appear in this meeting anyway that there's a comprehensive plan to connect that information for us as residents to try to understand that more comprehensively uh between graduation dropout, between transferring students uh and whether or not Co-Centrix has access to district data to be able to further remediate some of those problems? And how does that get communicated to your internal staff? And then once they have it, what do they do with it? So that was just a concern for me uh this evening. Uh, the other thing, having a minute and eleven seconds left, is that I am still concerned about an educational plan as well as a financial solvency plan. Those are two plans that I know every district must have, and I'm still awaiting those plans. I have to say that after speaking with Dr. Townsend, I am eager to hear from him. He's been exceptionally open uh to working with community people. And I think that is something that is necessary in order for us as a community, because this is not just a Benton Harbor area school problem. When you have others who are coming in trying to start up charter schools and charter high schools and all these other alternative programming, what that says is they recognize that the work is not being done and they're setting up shop to take over what's not being done. So I'm concerned about a comprehensive plan. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. James, and uh Dr. Townsend will be providing follow up to your public comments and concerns as indicated in his statement earlier. And I like this timer. Um, I'm not sure which one of our trustees recommended this, but this is awesome. I think this is excellent for not only the board but for our um citizens that are listening because Ms. James was able to see exactly where she was. So I can't remember which uh which one of our trustees suggested this, but this was an amazing suggestion. So I really, really like it. Is there anyone else on the line for public comment this evening?
Good evening. Uh, this is Marion Triplet. Can you hear me?
I sure can. You have the floor, Mrs. Triplet.
Yes, eight one eight South Crystal Avenue, Benton Harbor, Michigan. And I'm a citizen and taxpayer. Um, my first uh question uh is related to the superintendent's report on the return to school. Um, it flashed very quickly, but it looked as if there might have been a vaccination pilot as part of the activities. And my question is, even though it's not required, does the school district have an institutional review board for human subject research? And if so, who are the members on that? And if any data is collected, will that be reported back out to the community at large? And my second uh comment, I would like to congratulate and say that I was uh thoroughly pleased. Um, I had the opportunity to view the student authors in the our side of the river. Um, it was magnificent. Um, and kudos to the staff and any collaborators in pulling that together. But it also made me think about the giftedness that exists within our students. And I would like to know if uh current and then current applications, um if we have them to the Bering County Math and Science Center, if we have them to the Early Middle College Dual Enrollment Fifth Year Program at LMC, and then if we have any applications to Western Michigan University's academically talented youth program. Um, I definitely think from among those students, we should have um eligible students who can meet criteria for many different types of gifted programming. So again, my congratulations to that. And then finally, the superintendent's comment on the disproportionate minority contact that I used to have in the uh juvenile justice system. As a former probation officer uh in Bering County, um ten years ago is disproportionate. It seems as if it still is. And while I appreciate the conversations, uh uh the data also represents systemic discrimination in criminal justice systems. So I would encourage that the conversation for service providers and the courts to include a lens of anti racism and anti oppressive practices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Triplet, for your comments this evening, and we will follow up with you on the questions that you provided. Do we have anyone else in the community that is here for would like to offer a public comment this evening? Anyone else for open public comment? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna move on to superintendent announcements. Dr. Townsend.
Hello, everybody in the community. So um I also have the pleasure of sitting in on the virtual book launch of our students' book, Our Side of the Ri- River, The Real Deal. Ladies and gentlemen, I encourage everybody to get this book. Great, great book. Our young people are really um impressing us with um their um writing skills. Dr. Goble and an army of teachers and volunteers made this effort possible through their dedication and hard work, especially through the pandemic. I'm very proud of our student authors and our staff for their hard work. Thanks so much to the Benton Harbor Education Foundation for their support in this effort and to author Alex Kotlitz, who authored Our Side of the River. Uh, this is one of the first books I got when I came to the community. And to see our young people write the follow up to that book was amazing. Um, that was also present at the launch. We wanted to give a brief introduction to that event, so shout out to them. Um, I want to congratulate Senior Tyler Meeks. Um, he's the Benton Harbor High School winner of the two thousand twenty one Youth of the Year for the Boys and Girls Club of Benton Harbor. Um, at a virtual celebration, February eleventh, he was celebrated um from the Joel Smil teen center on West Empire Avenue in Benton Harbor. It was a crowning moment for Meeks. He did a great job. Tyler is an eighteen year old senior at Benton Harbor High School where he's part of the football team, basketball team, and baseball team. He worked as a junior staff member at the club fatigue youth campus where he mentored young club members fostering their dreams and goals. And he believed the club saved his life and now he's giving back. Um, the CEO of Boys and Girls Club of Benton Harbor, Kenzie Castle, says that Tyler is an extraordinary young man and a perfect spokesperson on behalf of kids we serve at the club. He is a model for other clo- club members to aspire. And he is using each experience he faces as a stepping stone to his future. Huge, huge shout out to him. Additionally, I'd like to give a shout out to the staff and students of Fair Plain East Elementary School. They did a phenomenal job of decorating their doors for Black History Month. I have the actual privilege of serving as the judge of the doors. And ladies and gentlemen, I encourage you to join the Benton Harbor Area Schools Facebook page and look at February twenty fifth, the you twenty fifth, you can browse all fifteen doors uh where students and staff decorated. They did a phenomenal job. That post has reached over two thousand seven hundred and thirty people, over four hundred and four engagements and nineteen shares. Uh, so people, the community really, really appreciated the hard work of our young people. Um, additionally, I want to give another shout out to two of our high school students who were acknowledged by Governor Gretchen Whitmer and Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist. They celebrated the accomplishments of African American youth from across the state. Seniors Tyler Meeks and Kentrell Pulliam were celebrated, and they shared their stories and their personal accomplishments. As you know, uh Tyler Meeks is our uh young student athlete who's also the Benton Harbor uh two thousand twenty one Youth of the Year of the Boys and Girls Club. And Kentrell Pulliam was acknowledged as the Bering County Student Athlete of the Week. And also he was voted Student of the Month at Benton Harbor High School. Um, doing a great job as a young student athlete, really um leading also on the basketball court right now. Our boys are now eight and one because they did beat Saint Joe by thirty points last night. Uh, so we got some young people doing some great, great things. Also, our young girls are doing great things. I can't wait to get out of this meeting to go to our girls' basketball game in our gymnasium. They're doing a great job. And the last thing I'd like to share, or two more things. Ladies and gentlemen, I want us to continue to tell our own story unless we let or unless other people tell the story for us. Uh, we have the privilege of um communicating with ABC five seven about the rise of Benton Harbor. All we talk about is the future and what our education and environment will be and look like in the future. And that's all that matters. We're gonna work. Um, I did hear some public comment about our plan. We had a board retreat. We talked about a five year strategic plan. We can't wait to get that information out to the community. So there's never any confusion or question about what are we doing, what are we achieving, and what are we looking to attain in Benton Harbor area schools. The last thing I wanted to share is um I I was actually honored. I found out um late two thousand twenty that I was nominated by the uh Governance Committee of PBS WNIT Michiana to serve on their Board of Directors. And I found out that I was voted last night to be a member of the Board of Directors uh for PBS WNIT. And I'm excited because all those resources, I mean, ensure come to Benton Harbor Area Schools. I know they have a lot of educational programming where they highlight also a lot of communities in the Michiana area. Uh, so my goal is to be a part of the solution with telling our story and putting the good news out like it's bad news. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend, for your announcements. We are going to move on to board member announcements. Try to switch it up a little bit. So I am going to start with trustee Buchanan. Do you have any announcements or comments this evening? Trustee Buchanan, can you unmute? Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can. Go ahead. I could hear you, uh trustee Buchanan, but you remuted yourself. Go ahead. It's your turn to offer your your comments or announcements. Trustee Buchanan, can you unmute again for me?
Uh, you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Can you hear me? I would like to all my fellow board members to say we we need to continue what we're doing and stay in focus of our young people because we definitely have some challenging young people in our community. But for instance, uh Ms. Robinson, the president, she was in in stuff about what ten years ago. Anyway, she did, she she was in the pageant. And the mayor of the city of Benton Harbor was in our program. So we have Corey Sterling, the basketball coach, is doing great. And I know this is not February, this is Black March. But what we have to do is continue to support one another. And all though mine, you had a school, you have a principal, a principal, school teacher, a social worker leader, and then a community activist. And Ms. Creighton, I know she's a good cook. And I know she over the years when she was teaching at the high school. Man, I stayed with the marching with the board down on the floor. I stayed in the in the office. So uh I would like to say what we, I feel so good about this board. But I need to let Dr. Townsend know that my computer, it was static. I couldn't hear nothing, Mr. Triplet. Nobody was saying. So I'm gonna either bring it back tomorrow and have somebody look at it because it's not fit. Because I want to be seen on 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 the computer. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
You're welcome. Thank you, trustee Buchanan. Next, I will call for trustee Rocket Martin, and I want you to remember to give your shout outs you were mentioning earlier.
Um, Dr. Townsend covered a lot of my shout outs. However, he did miss one. I'd like to thank uh Mrs. Gazelle Hardaway and her class for a soul food Black History Dinner that they cooked for um for us. I I think for the staff and 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 the board, we were invited. And uh the children cooked, the students cooked it, and they served it. And it was tasty. They did a wonderful job. So hats off to the to the chefs at Fair Plain Junior High. Also, I'd like to thank um the Fair Plain East for their Black History Program. It was phenomenal. It was wonderful. And I also would like to give a shout out to the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta who partnered with uh Fair Plain East uh Elementary School to give them some wonderful uh encouragement and information and and just encourage them to continue on working hard, studying hard, and and to be all that they could be. So I'd like to also thank, give a shout out to them. And I think my last shout out, because doctor uh doctor, like I said, Dr. Townsend did cover was the presentation from uh Dr. Gobles and uh the high school students and the middle school students who participated in that um that other side of the our side of the river. It was wonderful. It was uh, you know, I don't know if they taped it or if we could pull it up later on or even air it, you know, um at another time for those that missed it. But it was so encouraging and you can see the talent that runs through our district. And like uh Mrs. Triplet, um, you know, I I used to work with the students who would attend uh the math science centers. And I know that uh we have students who probably, you know, if if given the chance would could go in that direction. So yes, I too am looking forward to to um exploring those kinds of talented avenues for our students. So I would say to our teachers and our staff, keep your hopes up, keep your spirits high, and we're gonna win all of this together. We'll we'll be great. We'll be just fine.
Thank you, trustee Rocket Martin. Next, we're gonna have trustee Bowens for comments and announcements.
Where do I go? Uh, thank you, President um Robinson. Um I was able to participate in the Black History Program that Fair Plain, um Mr. Will and the Deltas and then posted um did. It was um but but flashbacks and job well done. Um, you know, it's always great to live in Benton Harbor, be a product of Benton Harbor Area Schools, and have your nieces and nephews and um friends go to Benton Harbor. And it's always a great thing to feel trusted by the teachers and the people who work for the school district um that constantly comes up and talks to me and voices their concerns. Uh, when I ran, my platform was a new voice for a new beginning, which means business as usual is no longer accepted or doing the same thing over and over in forgetting about the realities or not shining a light on the truth. But we paint a broad picture that it is okey dokey when we do have some situations. And it's not afraid, and it's not a bad thing to focus on our negative because in order for us to grow on that, we have to know what's the good and the bad. So I want us to remember that. I'm concerned, though, um I have not received, you know, any data on how many of our students are failing from virtual learning or dealing with COVID. We don't have that yet, and I would be interested to see that. Um, and we have to, I I I'm interested in even seeing a plan to get those students back up to date. The situation with Benton Harbor area schools didn't happen overnight. But I do believe with the right leadership, the right plan, and trust and commitment and understanding, we're able to work together and prove we're stronger together. And we can be that little train that could keep on going. Or how Ronald Reagan says it, that shiny city on the hill. People can look at Benton Harbor as an example. And I'm excited to see where do we go from here. But I also want us to focus on the realities that do exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Bowen, for your comments today. Next, we will have Treasurer Creighton.
Thank you. I had a few things I wanted to say. I think Trustee Bowen gave me a great lead in because as I've been sitting on this call and really trying to figure out, you know, where I fit into this whole thing. And the three words that keep coming to my mind are governance, oversight, and accountability. And I know that's the platform that our board is working on. And that's, you know, that's our work. And so as I think about governance, oversight, and accountability, I just wanna, you know, thank everyone for being a part of the solution. And sometimes I think we have to remember that, you know, each and every entity on this call, or that's not on this call, but that's in this community, you know, play a vital role in this solution to a big problem that we face in urban districts and the urban areas, but in particular in Benton Harbor. And so I'm grateful for everyone being at the table and willing to, you know, help find a solution. One thing that I have been doing personally, I've been trying to learn the budget so that on my finance committee, I can ask the right questions and can provide that governance, oversight, and accountability in the areas of HR. You know, we've been looking at some of the HR policies, procedures, you know, so that we can make sure that we are protecting, you know, our assets and our investments. And furthermore, I do read a lot of the reports. And I think what's at the core of this whole circle and everything that we're doing is our students. And, you know, from a business perspective, you know, without a product, you don't have a business. And so I think it's important, you know, as we keep students in the forefront of our work so that we can produce the products that keeps us in business. You know, if we are, you know, auditing what we're doing or auditing or assessing our students or our products, and we realize that, you know, we're not producing quality products, then again, you know, we need to go back to the drawing board. So as I think about this work, I'm excited, you know, for the community trusting me to do the work for putting me at the table to do the work. And I'm looking forward to learning more about our plans. I've been spending time looking at that CAC plan with that advisory committee that was created a few years ago. And so as we move forward, like Trustee Bowen said, I'm looking forward to the work. And also, you know, I just want our community to know that we appreciate you, that we, you know, encourage you to continue to come and be the voice of our young people in this community. I'm very grateful for everything that's going on. It makes me feel good. I'm not comfortable right now going to the games yet. But, you know, I've been looking at them on Facebook and live streaming it, you know, really, really enjoying it. You know, that I feel like, you know, I can't support without being there. And so I, I just encourage you all to continue to support. Like, you know, everyone can't attend the games. Everyone can't attend, you know, everything that's going on due to COVID restrictions. But we can definitely support from afar. And I'm just excited about the work. And lastly, I just want to thank the staff for everything that they're doing. And, you know, this is a new board. We're learning each other. We're learning, you know, the board and the work that has to be done. And so when you see us doing and make your hard decisions, just know that it's not personal, that it's governance, oversight, and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Creighton, for your comments this evening. Next, we have Secretary Triplett.
Well, I think a lot has already been said. This has been very exciting for me. February was the month that I wanted to be on the board to and, and, and look at what it was, what was required of the Board of Education and the work. And I've had an opportunity these last two months to learn a lot. I'd like to piggyback on what some of the other trustees have said. I think this board, although we're in between forming and storming, I want to encourage you all. We're doing a great job. And I think that work that we've done and that we're doing. The retreat was very inspirational, and I'm looking forward to more work. We do have board members who are reaching out to, to grow. Because when everything is done, this is about our students. I won't be long tonight. I do want to, at this time, March is Women's History Month, and I would like to congratulate all women. And thank you for your contribution, those acknowledged and those unspoken that you have shared with us all here. And so when those types of things, those are, are very, very important celebrations, and they do have meaning. So to all of the women on this Board of Education, to all of the women who are employed in the Benton Harbor area schools, to our mothers and our sisters and our female students, I would like to just say I celebrate you this month in March. And again, too, I would like to congratulate those student authors from our side of the river who participated in that joint writing process, program. And it was absolutely amazing to see former students, students who graduated last year in two thousand twenty. And I did enjoy it. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Triplett. Next, we have Vice President Bradley.
Good evening, everyone. I have about five pages of notes. I'm joking. But a few things. First of all, I want to thank the public for coming out and making sure that you listen in and teachers and staff. I had an opportunity to attend the virtual book launch a few weeks ago. Very excited. I'm gonna make sure I get a few copies because being in my job as a truck driver, I have friends from all over the country. And the, the only reason why they know about my side of Michigan is just because of me. So I want to make sure they have something that they can look at and say, oh, okay, that's where you from, Benton Harbor, Michigan. And so I'm very excited. I like the stories. And so I'm definitely looking forward to getting that book and a few copies to gift out. Other thing I liked was the Black History Program by our students at Fairplain East. Brought back a lot of memories. I did hear somebody else say the same thing, but it did bring back a lot of memories as well and hearing some of the familiar stories. And so that was very, very awesome. Also during a virtual format, which was cool because I know it was kind of hard to pull off with the technology and everything. Want to also give a shout out to our students who had those achievements from the past week. Then I want to shout out to the board members, especially President Robinson. We were in finance committee. I didn't get a chance to tell you, but you asked some awesome questions. They were a fresher for me. So thank you for that. And to every other trustee and board member for all the questions. Thank you, guys, for an efficient meeting tonight. And that's how we grow. We kind of learn from each other. Because if we don't have questions or if we're quiet, don't think that we don't have any questions or anything to say. We're just usually just gleaning and learning the information. And then I also want to put a plug in. April, they're gonna be doing another CBA classes. So if you want to get some professional development in, April is the time to go and get a few more classes, meet board members from around the state and have those discussions. With that, in my comments, you all have a good evening.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you to everyone for your comments this evening. I will attempt to be brief with mine. I would like to start by congratulating everyone that participated in the Our Side of a River presentation. I thought it was phenomenal. Most of everyone knows I majored in English, so I have a special passion in my heart for literary art and works. So to see our children participating in that event, authoring a book, and some of the leadership that was reflected in them reading and sharing their work was absolutely amazing to me. Also want to thank the board members that were present in that presentation that eve, that evening, as well as all of the staff that participated in making that happen. I also highly enjoyed the Black History Program that was put on by Fairplain East as well. And I also want to thank my source, Delta Sigma Theta, for their contribution to that program. It was amazing to view. I would like to thank our two students that were included in Governor Whitmer and Lieutenant Governor Gilchrist's Black History Program, Mr. Meeks and Mr. Pulliam. It was very exciting to see that they were included. Like to also congratulate Tyler and Madison on being the two thousand twenty-one Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year. And Madison was the UPS Roll Code Ambassador. So congratulations to them. I would like to thank our board for an amazing retreat this Saturday. We had a phenomenal time and opportunity to get to know each other. We had a team building exercise. We went over policy, some of our procedures. And I think it gave us an opportunity to get to know each other better and just become stronger as a unit. So I just want to thank everyone on our board for all of their contributions that they give daily. I know anytime I send out an email, I say thank you for the effort. But I just want you all to know, it's not just professional courtesy. I truly do value everyone's contribution. And I think we all have friends. And I do value when you all ask questions and give your comments because it helps me in ensuring that we are going in a direction that everyone on the board agrees with. Like to thank Dr. Townsend for his efforts that he makes with communicating with the board. I most like the weekly updates because it ensures that we don't have to wait a month to get information on what's going on with the board. And also want to thank our staff, just the executive leadership team, but all staff within Benton Harbor area schools that are showing up daily to do the work for the children as well as the community that continues to support us. So that is the end of my comments. I don't have any announcements at this particular time. So thank you all for everything that you've offered to our meeting. Next, on our agenda.
President Robinson.
Yes.
President Robinson.
Yes, Ms. Buchanan.
I hate to interrupt you before you dismiss. I would like for the community to know and school board, someone probably already know, but Priscilla Tobias, the one that has been spirit, that always put a shout out to our students, her sister passed away. I don't know when the film will be, but she left him. She's from Benton Harbor. The film will be in Buchanan. And also, in the day's paper, Deion Atkins, I know everybody know him. He was a student at Benton Harbor. And he is, it is mentioned in the paper from January the sixth with that riot in Washington. He's a, he's a, he's a law enforcement man. And, and he had, he was, he was, got an autograph paper today, and he would want to pray up to an office. So, you know, our young people, every time I read Benton Harbor, that, that, that talent stand a lot. So we do have extraordinary talent in this town. Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
You are very welcome, Ms. Buchanan. And thank you for your additional comments. And I would like to provide my condolences to that you indicated lost a relative. So thank you. Next on our agenda is actually a closed session that would be open to the board only. So if there's any members of the public that would like to wait on the line until our adjournment, you're more than welcome to do so. But we are going to move into a closed session to consider written legal opinion from Clark Hill P L C, which is our attorney. And this is in pursuant to section eight H of the Opens Meetings Act. So if anyone would like to stay on the line, while we do that, you're more than welcome to do so. But if the motion passes for us to go into that closed session, we will be actually in another room and not privy to the community. So at this time, I am asking for a motion to move for the board to convene in closed session to consider written legal opinion of Clark Hill P L C.
President Robinson, before this motion.
I move. I move that we.
Trustee Buchanan.
Go in the call test.
Trustee Bowen has.
I move that we go into closed session.
Okay, I'll note that motion down. Trustee Buchanan. Go ahead with your question, Trustee Bowen.
Can you give us a topic of what this public closed session is in regards to?
Well, they are the, our legal counsel that deals with our HR matters. So it would be human resources related.
Okay. And Human Resource had no report, correct?
Not for this particular meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a second? For the motion, I have that Trustee Buchanan passed it.
I second the motion.
Okay. So the motion, the move to closed session to consider written legal opinion of Clark Hill P L C was moved by Trustee Buchanan, supported by Trustee Rocket Martin. Secretary Triplett, can you please call the roll?
Yes, President Robinson.
Yes.
Vice President Bradley.
Yes.
Secretary Triplett. Yes. Treasurer Creighton. Treasurer Creighton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowen.
No.
Trustee Rocket Martin.
Yes.
Trustee Lou Buchanan.
Yes. Could you hear me?
Yes, we heard you. Okay, so, okay, so policy indicates it has to pass by two thirds of a vote, which it did. So we are going to move into closed session effective seven thirty-seven P M. And to continue with open session.
I make a motion that we go back into open session.
Is there a support?
I support it.
Okay. Secretary Triplett, can you call the roll?
Yes, President Robinson.
Yes.
Vice President Bradley.
Yes.
Secretary Triplett, yes. Treasurer Creighton. Treasurer Creighton.
Hello?
Trustee Buchanan.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor to go back into our open meeting. Trustee Buchanan.
Yeah, I know. I was trying to say, I, I was trying to say we could go back to open meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, we're taking a bus. So we just, we just waiting for a yes or a no.
I said, yes.
Okay.
Now, when, when we.
Trustee, Trustee Bowen.
Yes.
Trustee Creighton.
Her computer looks like she might not be connected to.
Motion carried.
Mr. Triplett. Secretary Triplett.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello? I could, you know what? Now, when you was talking, I, I could not, your phone, something wrong either your computer or something. Because I could understand what you said, but my thing is, I need to know, what are we doing right now? Because I couldn't hear. She said you got six seconds. Then I would back home.
And that's okay, Ms. Buchanan. We're back in open session now. And Treasurer Creighton can't hear. It looks like she, her computer is not connected to audio. Yeah, we can hear you now, Treasurer Creighton.
So Treasurer Creighton.
We could hear her for a second. Can you hear us, Treasurer Creighton? She, something's going on with her audio. So go ahead.
Oh, she had a phone at first. I just, I don't see her phone.
We can hear you. Hold on one sec.
I don't think she's hearing.
Yes, I just, I just messaged her and told her she just can't hear us. Okay, so the next thing on our the next thing on our agenda is adjournment.
I moved that the meeting be adjourned.
I second that motion.
I second it. I second it.
Okay, Ms. trustee Buchanan, vice president Bradley beat you to second. Secretary Triplett, can you? Well, vice president Bradley beat you. I'm sorry trustee Buchanan. Quicker on the unmute button.
Yes.
Secretary Triplett, can you call the roll for adjournment?
Yes, President Robinson.
Yes.
Vice President.
Yeah, yes.
We can't hear you.
Secretary Triplett, yes. Treasurer Breach.
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin.
Yes.
Yes. Trustee Buchanan.
Yes.
Trustee Bowen's.
Could you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Trustee.
I'm not sure who you, did you call me?
I called trustee, I called trustee Bowen's.
Oh. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I sound, yes.
Who did you, who did you just say, secretary Triplett?
Trustee Bowen's.
He said yes to you, sir.
Okay, so motion carries.
Okay. All right, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.